Good evening. Okay, we want to get this Montclair City Council meeting started.
I forgot to tell you Joe was going to be late to do the prayer, but he just walked in.
He's there. All right, so we're going to begin the meeting with the invocation and the pledge allegiance. Pastor Joe is here, I see that. So I'm going to ask the city clerk to please go ahead and announce the person who will be doing the invocation and pledge allegiance.
Yes, Pastor Joe McTarsney of Calvary Montclair will be doing the invocation and leading us in the pledge will be Councilmember Johnson.
Great, thank you. Everybody, please stand.
Let's pray. Our Father, we thank you for our wonderful city, Lord. We pray that you keep our residents safe this evening. We thank you for our council too, Lord, giving wisdom on the items that's going to be discussed this evening, Lord. We lift up this meeting before you, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please join me as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Andrea, please have a roll call.
Member Lopez. Councilmember Martinez, here. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ruh.
Present.
Mayor Dutre.
I'm present.
Thank you.
Okay, next two items will be, or next item actually is presentations. There are two presentations this evening. And the first presentation I'm going to announce, I don't believe they're going to be here if I'm Andrea.
They're here, yes. Both are here.
The Family Court Awareness Month is here?
Yes.
Oh, they're both here. Okay, then I'll just follow the first ones. The first one will be the Family Literacy Day. And so I'm going to come down to the podium and we'll go ahead and present this proclamation. And then after that, I'll present the second proclamation, excuse me.
Okay, can everybody hear me? Does this mic actually work? All right, thank you very much. So the first one here is to the Family Literacy Day. And is there Kathy Holloway? Kathy here? There she is, come on down. Don't be scared. I don't bite. I promise. So on, you know, obviously literacy is an important thing in our society because we want to make sure, especially our children are able to read. Because as you all know, if you're a good reader, you have a lot of knowledge about life. And that's why we want people to read and do well. And this has been going on since, how many years now we've, the National Literacy Day's been going, been occurring in our country? How many years now? Any idea?
No, I'm sorry.
Nope. Well, I believe it's been going on for many, many years. And so on behalf of the city of Montclair, myself, and the city council, and the people of Montclair, we would like to declare November 1 of 2022 as National Family Literacy Day. So I'm going to give you the proclamation. Or is anybody taking pictures? There it is. How about we come over here and this way you don't have to look at the podium. Where you stand right in front of the podium.
Okay. Turn around. Great.
Thank you.
There's that. Do you have something you would like to say?
I just want to thank the city of, I just wish to thank the city of Montclair for this award or this proclamation. And the Daughters of American Revolution, which I am a member of, we take it very seriously for representing God, home, and country. And doing everything that we can for the cities and for the children and for veterans throughout the country.
Great, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, the second will be the Family Court Awareness Month. And I'm going to ask, is it Sandy?
Yes.
Sandy Ross. All right. And again, the month of November is known as Family Court Awareness Month. And we have a proclamation here to recognize that. So on behalf of the city council, myself, the mayor of Montclair, the city of Montclair and the people of Montclair, we would like to give your organization this proclamation. So let's also come over here, we'll take some pictures.
Take a picture. There you are. There you are. Congratulations. And would you like to say something?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you so much.
You bet.
First of all, thank you, Mayor, and city council members in the city of Montclair. My name is Sandy Ross, and I'm a survivor of domestic violence. And I'm the protective parent of a child survivor of abuse. And I really appreciate to get this proclamation for Family Court Awareness Month. I'm an advocate and a mouthpiece to get the word out that we would like our family court system trained on topics that they're ruling on every day across the country and in our great state of California. There's, judges are able to actually sit on the bench without training in these topics. And that's, people don't know that. So that's what we're about, is creating awareness and education. And I really appreciate you standing behind child safety. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, next item is public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the council. On any item that's not on the agenda, or if there is an item on consent calendar, you can request to pull it for, to speak on it. I will remind the audience that the city council cannot address or discuss any item that's not on the agenda. If you wish to speak, there's a blue card in the, to my left, and you fill out blue card, the speaker's card, and you'll give that to staff. If you're on Zoom, you'll hit the raise hand feature to request to speak. And if you're calling on a phone, you can hit the star nine feature on your phone to request to speak. So I'm going to ask the city clerk, do we have any speakers?
I have several cards. The first one is from the Arbo Verde Preservation Committee.
Okay. Before you come up, before you come up, I know that the subject you want to speak is the proposed restrooms as part of the Pacific Trail. And I know that you had a meeting recently with SBCTA Representative Tim. And I was, been told what is happening is SBCTA is reviewing the restroom issue, trying to determine if it could be modified, or other changes are doing. And nothing's concrete right now at this time. So it is under review by SBCTA. It's not being reviewed by the city of Montclair staff, unless I'm wrong. Am I correct, staff? Ed, is city of Montclair involved in this restroom? Is this?
Yes, we are involved in working with SBCTA as it relates to the location of the restroom and making certain that it's properly maintained. But the decision as to where specifically they are going to put it is entirely up to SBCTA. I also want to make note that the restroom, as it currently is situated, is entirely within the city of Upland, not in the city of Montclair. Our only responsibility in relation to the restroom would be its ongoing maintenance. That is an agreement that we had committed to previously to SBCTA prior to our discovering that its location was going to be in the city of Upland. We've agreed to maintain that requirement that we would provide maintenance for the restroom. Its actual location, however, will be entirely up to SBCTA.
Okay. Again, we can't talk about it, I know that. But the person is Tim Watkins from SBCTA. And I know that this subject came up here about three or four weeks ago, or two months ago, when we had the discussion on the development. I did ask that if there's concern, if there, you know, submitted petition to our city manager, petition to the city of Upland city manager, and petition to the SBCTA executive director, Ray Wolf. Has that been, have you received a petition, Ed?
I have personally not seen a petition.
Okay, I haven't heard anything about it too. But nevertheless, we will go ahead and start public comment. Again, we cannot talk about any item that's not on the agenda. And Andrea, it's all yours.
Yes, so the first card is from the Arbo Verde Preservation Committee.
And I'll just remind everybody, there's a total of five minutes. Thank you. Total of five minutes to speak, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Dutre and fellow council members. My name is Al Villanueva, and I'm chairperson of the Arbo Preservation Committee. The committee was originally known as the El Barrio Park Committee. We built a park in 1972. In fact, it was Tom McClure, former city council member, and Mike Milheiser from the city of Montclair that helped us achieve this dream, which serves three cities, which is an important part regarding the restroom situation. It serves the city of Montclair, city of Upland, and the city of Claremont. Okay? Before I go any further, I invited some residents to speak. And I'm going to read a press release. I was contacted by a reporter from the Progress Bulletin and the Daily Bulletin, and I'm going to go as follows. "A group of concerned citizens who reside in the historically culturally significant community of the Mexican-American Arbo Verde neighborhood, which sits in the Montclair-Upland section of San Bernardino County, will be descending upon Montclair City Council meeting tonight at 7:00 p.m. under public comment to express their opposition to the planned construction by the San Bernardino County Transportation Authority and the city of Montclair of public restrooms to the west end of the Pacific Electric hiking, biking trail. The public amenity, the public amenity restrooms are currently planned to be constructed in the middle of a residential neighborhood. The Arbo Verde Barrio residents are collectively opposed to the proposed construction and argue that the restrooms will attract homeless persons, gang members, and present a significant danger and risk to the tranquility and public safety of one of Upland and Montclair's oldest barrio communities. The area is also considered a sacred site, where one of our first Catholic churches in the Pomona Inland Valleys was built in the early 1900s by devout Mexican indigenous Catholic refugees, peasants, escaping the ravages of a Marxist Mexican revolution." I'm just going to echo, well, first of all, I don't know who initiated the meeting on the 21st, but we had a very productive meeting. City staff was there, Mr. Diaz was there, the developer was there, Mr. Tramal Crowe, and Mr. Watkins was there. We made some progress, okay? But, but we're at the table. And we want to continue being at the table because, you know, it reeks of environmental racism, okay? Especially in light of what happened in LA City Council. We have no compassion for racism in Montclair, Upland, Claremont whatsoever. But I did receive good tidings from Tim. I spoke to him at length for almost 45 minutes, and he has assured me, as the mayor accurately described the situation, we are not under the presumption that it will or will not be built in that particular area in the residential neighborhood because the funding is tied into the location. And Mr. Watkins explained to me that they're reviewing the whole process. We are hoping, you know, with a capital H, that they could be put further down in the trail. But then we also talked with Mr. Watkins and reiterated that El Barrio Park has restrooms that are being used by the hikers and the cyclists currently today. When they, when they come off the trail, they go to the park, they eat their lunch, they use the restrooms. The restrooms are approximately 600 feet from where the trailhead is right now. So why in the hell do we have two restrooms, okay? I just want to thank the city council, especially the mayor. He's the one that suggested. We followed up, we had a very productive session on the, on the 21st of September. We're still mitigating the situation. I'm also in contact with Marjorie, with Supervisor Kurt Hagman. He contacted us, and hopefully we'll be sitting down with them. We don't want to create a circus. We can collaborate this, collaborate together with the county and the city of Montclair to make sure that we have public safety. I'm retired in law enforcement. We had a gang there for many years, caused a lot of problems. I work with the homeless in downtown Claremont, with the Claremont Police Department and the Upland Police Department as a retired police officer. And we have problems when we have restrooms there because the drug addicts and the homeless will go in there, lock themselves in, and it's just going to, criminal activity will explode, especially in light of the 302 apartment unit building that Tramal Crowe is bringing in. We're working closely with Tramal Crowe.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next is Pat Westrop. Sorry, I hope I said that right.
You got it right.
I got it right.
My name is Pat Westrop. First thing I want to say is I've been resident in Montclair since 1958. I have two questions. One is, I live on Brutus Hill. When are we going to get our new drainage pipes put in? We've had our streets torn up so many times, and we were told it's this year, but so far nothing. And the other thing I have is a complaint. There's a house that lives on my next street, El Marado. It must have 12 or 15 cars. Every day when I walk my dog by, I have to go around in the street because they're blocking the sidewalk. And I want to know if something can be done about it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
And Mike, if you can talk to this lady, this woman about those two issues, appreciate it.
Okay.
That was me.
Next, I have Elle Campos.
Come on down. Don't be, don't be shy. They don't bite up here.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lorraine Campos, and I live at 4681 Huntington Drive, south of the bike trail. And I have a few concerns, you know. I've been there 40-plus years, and it's been a very safe, quiet place, you know, to live. Until back in 2000 roughly, that they put that bike trail. And the concern I have is, you know, the bike trail, we get a lot of homeless. I've had mental issue persons that come into my backyard where I had to call police, you know, to, to take them out. And not too long ago, we had a guy that was chased up the bike trail that was tackled by the police trying to get into a car. Several months ago, we had the police at gunpoint with guns drawn out, something with drugs that was right there on the bike trail. And I also, the bike trail, you know, the parking area that they build to, the, the people that park in there, they just come and throw their trash. Nobody bothers to pick it up except the residents that live there on Huntington Drive, the Upland side and the Montclair side. They're out there picking up their trash. The homeless come around and the trashcans are taking out stuff, you know? And I'm a widow, I live, you know, on my own, and there's several other ladies that are widow. And it's scary, you know, because this, things that have happened, it's been in broad daylight, you know? And, and it's just scary to, to know that all this is happening. And then now they're trying to put this bathroom, you know, in our residence, you know? And to me, you know, we're, we're trying to, I mean, to me, it's a bad evaluation on our properties. And, you know, we're trying to improve our properties, not, you know, the, make them worse, you know? And I'm just not happy with this bathroom that they're trying to put, you know? I feel that, like Al says, there's a bathroom at, at the park, 600 feet from where we live, they can go there, you know? And that's just a concern that I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, Steve Schultz.
Hi, I'm Steve Schultz, 4653 Huntington Drive, Montclair, California, 91763. And I'd like to talk about the restroom too. And the first thing I'd like to say is that I don't know how the idea of putting a restroom in the middle of a residential area, I don't know who have figured that out, but it, it doesn't seem very logical. Restrooms, I would say, would be in a park, or in a campground, or someplace where people gather for things of that nature. And let's see, what was I going to say here? Yeah, the restroom, one thing that came into my mind is that we were talking, you were talking a little early about it's on the Upland side and whatever. But technically speaking, as far as I know, the property that the restroom is going on is the Pacific Electric line. And so that's not Upland or Montclair. It happens to be on the Upland side, but that's, that's somebody else's property. And the bike trail, we share that prop, the bike trail shares, shares the property with Upland and Montclair. So I think it, it should be pretty much equally divided. And I just think it's a very poor thing to have the idea of putting a restroom in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And as Al and Lorraine said, that there are alternatives. The alternative is one, to go to the park, and it's not that far, and it could be a sign to direct people where it is. And the second thing is there's other alternatives. John Dominguez's friend had the idea last time that there's going to be, right by Montevista, there's going to be another trail or something, a walking trail that's going to join up the bike trail or something. And the restroom, an alternative place for the restroom would be over there. There's no, no houses, it's not a residential area. And it would serve two purposes, for the bike trail and for the future walking trail. And another alternative would be, now, I haven't been there in years and years, but if you go east of Montevista, you get the MetroLink parking lots. And I remember 20 years ago, there used to be a trailer in there, a trailer in the, in the MetroLink parking lot. And somebody lived there that was kind of like a watchman to look over the parking lot. And if someone was there living in a trailer, he must have had water and sewer. So that would, that would facilitate the wastewater from a, from a restroom. And I just think it's a bad idea. And as Lorraine said, our property values would all go down. We would lose the, the warmness of a neighborhood, we having all kinds. Okay, the third thing that I'm thinking is, the third thing is, the bike trail's been there for several years now, and there's never been any problem that I know of without a restroom. In other words, people, generally speaking, they come and park their cars there and everything, and they go on their bike ride. And I didn't, I've never seen anyone running off into the bushes to go to the bathroom. And I don't really think a bathroom is needed. Because a lot, some of, everyone is different, some people do this, that, and the other. But I noticed a lot of them, when they come there, they come and, and they, the few that I've talked to over the years, they usually go to a restaurant or something, or someplace to eat a breakfast, or this, or that, or the other, before they take the bike ride. They take their bike ride and, and go in their cars or whatever, and they go home. And I don't think a restroom is really necessary. And, okay, to summarize, to summarize, I think it's Montclair's responsibility too, not only Upland, because the bike trail is Pacific Electric line property, and it's shared with both cities, just because it happens to be on their side. Okay, the second thing is, I don't know if anyone knows, but right where they want to put that restroom, underground is a fiber electric line, a fiber optic line. And I don't know if they consider that when they, when they want to start building on top of it. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Florencia Garcia.
Hello, my name is Vera Wilson. I live at 46.
I can't hear you, Vera.
Huh? I'm too short.
Did she, hold on Vera.
I'm too short.
Andrea, did Vera fill out a speaker's card?
Say that again.
I don't have one for you.
That's fine. Well, you go, you can go.
We have a card.
Go ahead and speak, and then afterwards you can fill out a card and give it to staff. Go ahead.
Okay, then you're going to kick me out. My name is Vera Wilson. I live at 4665 Huntington Drive. I was born in the house which I still live in. The, the trail has been something that, we used to live in that house in peace and quiet. And now we have people going up and down, people that are homeless. And I'm afraid I have to lock my door where we didn't have to do it before. The thought of having a bathroom put right in front of where I live, whether it's in Montclair, or Upland, or wherever, is very, very distressing. Because as it is, it's a totally different situation from where I've always lived. I'm totally agreeing with all my neighbors that this is not a good situation. You can move the bathroom someplace else, not in front of my house. Okay? And I'll, I'll fill out your card.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my apologies. Now Florencia Garcia and Jenna Alveron.
Good evening.
Hello.
My name is Florencia Garcia. I too was born in that house. She's my sister, in that same house, there on Huntington Drive.
Different, different time, right?
We're all sisters, yeah. And I do oppose very much of that bathroom going there because of the safety of her and the rest that do live still in my mother's house. I call it still my mother's house because it's still standing, it's still there, and they still live there, and I am very worried about them. So my opinion is find somewhere else, not the residential that I lived in, that I could walk into anybody's home and the first thing the mummy would say, are you hungry? You want a burrito? Can't do that anymore. Can't. It's not safe. And then you come in with a new bathroom with heaven knows who's walking by? I don't think so. Sorry, but I am not in agreement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mohammed Nash.
Hello.
Thank you, Your Honor. The council's member. My name is Mohammed Nash. I live on 4697 Huntington Drive. The neighborhood, as you guys know, is, it's an elderly neighborhoods. And I work for the federal government as a part of the land management programs. And I've been doing a lot of NEPA, National Environmental Equality. And I've been doing a lot of CEQA, California Environmental Quality Acts. And always they consider, always they consider the justice in anything they build, you know, for, for the neighborhood, environmental justice, you call it. When the city manager, Mr. Starr, Edward Starr, mentioned that, that the part of the design is Upland taking care of that, and they are going to facilitate the services. If you pull the block and you don't do the services, then they don't do it. So city of Montclair involve directly to building these facilities, if you like it or not. So if don't provide any services, they will not do it. But also consider the neighborhood, the age of the neighborhood, they want to live in peace. So when you're building something like that, it's not going to help them, the crime will increase, and you don't want to see those old people suffering from something that you guys are going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Janine. Bruce.[1745.91]
design is Upland taking care of that, and they are going to facilitate the services. If you pull the block and you don't do the services, then they don't do it. So City of Montclair involve directly to building these facilities, if you like it or not. So if don't provide any services, they will not do it. Also consider the neighborhood, the age of the neighborhood, they want to live in peace. So when you're building something like that, it's not going to help them, the crime will increase, and you don't want to see those old people suffering from something that you guys are going to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janine Briscoe O'Winer?
My daughter's name is Janine, too.
Oh. Hi, thank you for this opportunity, for letting me come and speak today. I'm, I love the city, I've lived here all my life. I went to Montclair High, I walked up and down the streets, went to the mall, I have a lot of fond memories here. But today, I'm coming because I'm concerned about the homeless problem that we're getting here. I live on, well, off of Ramona, 4478 Princeton Street, so it's close to Ramona, which is also perpendicular to Palo Verde, and there's a freeway pass. And there's this homeless encampment that's starting, I mean, it's forming, and it's, I've called about it, I've taken pictures of these people, they're, I mean, they've parked shopping carts like they're, like it's a hotel, or like it's a home. And I don't know if you guys are aware, but it's really starting to take form.
I think Mike is writing that down, because we just had, I know I'm interrupting you on, but we just had a homeless encampment today, that code enforcement resolved, so I suspect, Mike, tomorrow, they'll be there tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, it's really getting out of hand.
Yeah, I think I know exactly what you're talking about, at the end of Ramona.
Kids walk up and down that street, and it's not a highly trafficked area, so I'm concerned about the safety of, you know, students walking to school, people walking to work, I mean, it's just very dangerous.
Yes, we'll be there tomorrow. Code enforcement will be taking care of that tomorrow. Thank you for bringing that attention.
Thank you.
All right, and then Janice Briscoe.
Madam City Clerk, what is the last name?
My name is Janice Briscoe.
Thank you.
Okay, that was my daughter that was just speaking. So, like she said, we are very concerned about that homeless encampment that's growing. We did call a couple weeks ago, or maybe about three weeks ago, because we noticed that someone was using drugs openly, right on the street, by his car. So I'm very happy that you're going to do something about that, because it's, once they get in, they can be very dangerous, and they don't go away. You shoo them out, but they come right back. And they've already destroyed that fence, that gated area to keep them out, it's gone. So I do appreciate that you are taking it into consideration and.
Yes, and then the office will be dealing, his name is Gabe Fondero.
Oh, great.
And make sure you meet Gabe, and he'll probably give you his telephone number, so in the future that happens again, you can call him directly.
Okay, thank you so much.
No problem.
Okay, that's all the cards I have, and it looks like Bruce Kulp has his hand.
Yeah, one Zoom person, okay, Bruce.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm out of the bar right now, so yeah, apologize for that last meeting, Mayor De Trey, but anyways, so I wasn't going to speak about the Pacific Electric Trail, but I, just listening to the comments, you know, I'm a regular user to those residents that live there, I'm not a homeless person, so I, hopefully I haven't disturbed you guys too much, as I go up and down the trail, but I do enjoy your beautiful neighborhood. So thank you for letting me, allowing me to use that trail through your neighborhood, and try to behave while I'm going through there. I know, I understand SBCTA's, Montclair's, and Uplands Point, that's a trailhead, and they'd like to have restroom facilities there, like Rancho and some of the other cities that have restrooms at their trailheads, but, you know, that's, that's a pretty close, the homes are very close to that trail, and so I understand the needs of the residents there, where they might be concerned, I've, you know, I go through that entire trail, all 21 miles, at least once a year, and, you know, I encounter homeless, and they're, they've never given me any problems, most of them are usually pretty friendly to me, but understanding that, you know, there are residents that are older and, or, you know, have some fears in there, and so it might not be the best place for a restroom. One of them was mentioning the Cal State property over there, off of Rincon, and, you know, Montevista, that might be a better place, it's, you know, it's state property, and I bet you could get a better, you know, situation there. So I would encourage you, or even the new property with those multi-homes, I know you're going to put a little trailhead right there, that where San Antonio Trail meets the Pacific Electric Trail, that might be an ideal place for a public restroom. It's highly visible on the street, so let's, you know, there'd be a lot less issues with maybe crime-related things going on in that public restroom in that corner, so just a suggestion, but that's not what I'm here to speak about today. Today, I missed a meeting a couple weeks ago, where you guys were going to work on, one of my good friends there, Ed Starr's negotiating his contract, so I just wanted to put in a good word for him. You know, he's gotten us through the last few years of the pandemic, and got our city through safely, and followed all the protocols that were, that were needed to get us through there, so thank you, Ed, for taking care of us through that time. He's also been able, with his staff, to get grants and bonds, to put millions of dollars into our city coffers, and got a sales tax increase that was written by the city under his direction. I know we've increased the police force under his direction, so, you know, we're about ready to go into a, into a recession here pretty soon. We don't need to be trying to hire a new city manager, I think we've got one of the best in the entire Inland Empire. And we have been so fortunate under his direction with the staff that worked with him day in and day out. I really appreciate all the city staff there, and I think Ed has done a wonderful job, and I just want to provide some support there. The last thing I want to talk about is, not the last staff meeting, but a couple staff meetings ago, I remember Ben Lopez talking a little bit about the rates of the city attorney. I wondered why he was so concerned about that, but then I remembered, we are spending, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars on his sexual harassment, you know, case over there, and I'm guessing that's what he's concerned about, that all that money that the, you know, that the, all the many hours that the city attorney's having to work on the reason for him, you know, causing sexual harassment against employees of the city. I'm wondering if that's maybe the reason he was questioning her rates, more than likely. And then I think back in May or June or July, Mayor De Trey asked about gathering those costs and finding out how much that sexual harassment case that Ben Lopez caused is costing the city, and I'm wondering if anybody is, we're going to get that, those amounts anytime soon at one of these city council meetings. I think we need the taxpayers of this city to understand the costs that are being associated as a result of Ben Lopez's actions, as soon as he became a city councilman, and immediately started sexually harassing employees. So I'm hoping that somewhere soon, that maybe somebody can answer the question of when we're going to hear about the costs associated with his actions and sexually harassing the employees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
That's all.
Okay, and I would just say this again, I know that we're working with Tim Watkins with SBCTA, and they are again reviewing the restroom, the location of the restroom, where it's going to go, and based on that, we'll see what the determination is later on. But I would encourage all of you to not just come here to Montclair, I would encourage everybody to go to Upland City Council meeting as well, because they're part of the jurisdiction. And of course, you've already contacted county supervisor Kurt Hagman. Kurt Hagman, myself, and Carlos Garcia, a councilman from the city of Upland, we all sit on the SBCTA board. So with that, we will move down to consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly.
We have another speaker over here.
We're done with speaker, I just closed it. Got a speaker, yeah, Smith speaking cards, everybody did that, I'm sorry, but we're going to move on with the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, real quickly.
Mr. Lopez.
One speaker brought trash along a certain section of their area. Could we please have staff, I believe the speaker was Lorraine Gompels, could we please have staff get the grievance from her, so it can be addressed, please?
Yeah, we'll take care of that, thank you. All right, so now we will go down to the consent calendar of the agenda, and I want to ask any members on my left who wish to remove an item. Anybody on my right wants to remove an item?
I want to pull C1, please.
You want to pull C1? Okay, C1, go ahead. Anybody on my right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, item A, I'm sorry, 10A.
10A?
I'm sorry, wait a minute, I'm getting my whole.
And thank you for coming, everybody. Thank you.
No, Mr. Mayor, I misspoke, none, none for me, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let's go down to item C1, which is the after-school program. Go ahead, Councilman Johnson.
I just have a question about if we're going to remove the vaccine verification, is that temporary? Does it change based on our COVID numbers, or is that going to be forever?
Well, I believe that reflects a requirement of the school district that it's no longer necessary, so that would be a determination by the school district. For our own personnel, if we mandated of our own personnel, that would be a separate issue, but the school district no longer requires it.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you very much. So, there's no other comments, so let's get a motion for the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve.
Johnson first.
I will second.
Bruce second, and let's get electronic vote. Okay, that's a 5-0. Next item is business item, this is to consider preparation of action minutes for the city council and commission meetings, and I'm going to ask the city clerk to do a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor De Trey and members of the city council. Tonight, this evening, staff is recommending that the city council consider approving the preparation of action minutes as opposed to summary minutes. The difference between action and summary minutes is that summary minutes provide a more detailed explanation of a conversation that took place before an action is made by the legislative body, whereas action minutes would only be the action and maybe a sentence or two about the discussion, if any. So the reason this proposal is coming about is because ever since COVID, we've started webcasting all of our meetings, so there's much more participation from the public, there's more comments being made, it is beginning to take a lot more time to do the transcription of the minutes. If you noticed in the staff report, it was reported that the August 15 minutes took me, the city clerk, approximately seven and a half hours to prepare, and then it took staff three and a half hours, or two and a half hours to proofread, for a total of almost nine hours. So when I did prepare a version that was action only, which I did before the summary minutes, it was actually only two and a half hours to prepare the action version. So it does save a lot of staff time, and in fact, could probably be delegated to lower-level staff members to prepare, rather than higher-level staff members who are more tuned to what the conversations are about. So this is also being proposed for commission meetings. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer, I did include samples of the August 15 minutes as well as an action version that I prepared.
Thank you very much, and I just want to note that the city clerk actually talked to me about this idea, and I concur with her. I think the action minutes does portray what took place in the city, and with all the verbatim recordings now, or the electronic video recordings, there is much information out there in terms of what this council said. In addition to that, we're following a practice that many other cities are doing the same thing, going with the actual items. And finally, obviously, if a councilman believes something is important, it's being said, they want that in the minutes, then that's something that will be added to the minutes at the direction of a member of the council. So any questions for staff, Councilman Lopez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I looked at the draft of the action minutes as opposed to the summary minutes. I remember a time, and it's been a long time ago, when Mark Crawford was city clerk, and we actually had a lady sitting there transcribing like a court reporter does, and then providing minutes verbatim in that manner, and she did that as a sample or a trial to see if it was something the city would be interested in, and obviously, the city did not go that route. I, I understand that with the advent of technology, we have our meetings broadcast on the YouTube channel, we have them online. In the summary minutes, my concern is that a position expressed by a member of the council in relation to a vote cast doesn't necessarily give ample description of why the member voted such a way. I know that we had just recently a lengthy discussion on the marijuana issue before we placed the item on the ballot, and there was some great differences of opinion and some points made, and some votes that weren't necessarily 5-0, and some votes that were 3-2. I know that the mayor just stated that certain items or certain statements of council can be added to the minutes at the discretion of that council member, but I want assurances that any council member making that request, it will be honored, and not at the whim of the majority to over, to deny the request of that council member. It says here that the city clerk's office, or the city clerk themselves, refers to notes, prepares the minutes, but oftentimes has to refer back to audio tapes to verify and transcribe certain comments. I'm assuming we're not relying solely on the YouTube channel or what's on the city's website to archive all those meetings, correct?
No, we do have an actual copy of the video file.
So if anything were to happen, let's say, God forbid, we're subject to ransomware or attacked in some way, and then all that stuff is taken down, you still have the ultimate copy of it, your office does.
Yes, and YouTube.
Not everyone that comes to these meetings has an ample chance to review YouTube or the website, or whatever, wherever they're broadcast, and that's my concern, is that many times, those that come to speak on an item come the day of the meeting, and they'll thumb through, for those that have access to the complete agenda, will thumb through minutes that are brought before us, and they can get a sampling of what happened at the meeting prior, beforehand. And I understand some do utilize the website, and will download them or read them online, and that's fine. I guess, I guess I'm just, when it comes to minutes, I've always been an advocate that they should be a detailed report of what had happened and comments made, in addition to obviously the minimum required actions that the state mandates of us. The seven and a half hour, nine hour timeframe that your staff use to prepare minutes is an anomaly, it's not the, it's not the customary practice, because most meetings, 90% of our meetings, maybe even more, are not that long in discussion, input, or length. So while that one particular set of minutes may have been cumbersome to prepare and time-consuming, that's not always the case. If, it also says in the report that the city clerk can have verbatim minutes for any discussion or comment prepared upon request. Now, does that statement apply to not just us as council, should we want them, but to a member of the public? And if they are provided to a member of the public, is there a fee for such a request?
I've never gotten a request from a member of the public, and that's not in our fee schedule, so that's something we would need to look at if it ever did happen. So I don't know if the city manager would like to weigh in on if that situation were to come up, but at this time, I've only prepared verbatim minutes for legal purposes.
Sure, sure, I understand. So if someone tomorrow requested a verbatim copy of last council meeting, what would be the decision, Mr. City Manager?
We're not required under the California Public Records Act to produce a document, so it would not be our inclination to produce a verbatim document for a member of the public who would come in and request it, so it wouldn't be on our fee schedule, simply because we would not be reproducing or producing a verbatim document. We would for members of staff, and we would obviously be doing that for members of the city council. But for members of the public, we would provide them with a digital copy of the meeting.
That's fair. I guess I just am uneasy about this, because I think what it, what could happen is for selective comments made by either council members or members of the city council. is for selective comments made by either council members or members of the public would be included at the exclusion of others, and that is a subjective determination to be made by any city clerk's office, not just Ms. Myrick, but anybody in that position. And I, I think the minutes that we have now, even though we may be in the minority with respect to the number of cities that produce those, I think they're of value. And I do think they give a pretty clear, tell a story of what actually happens in these meetings, and I'm comfortable with them. But depending on any other comments from my colleagues, I might be able to be swayed to go along with this. I just am a little bit uneasy with it at the moment.
Council, Mayor Proten Ru.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am a bit uncomfortable with this. I view minutes as a permanent record of the proceedings of a meeting. Action item, or action minutes are fine, but it really doesn't give the whole scope of what's been said, what has transpired, and the backstory. Quite often, there's a backstory council member, a member of the public may have on something, and it may be very germane to the issue at hand. I also tend to look at a situation where five, 10, 15 years in the future, somebody may need those minutes. And they need not just an action item, what was said, why did they say it? Because it's institutional knowledge at that point. So I, even if we're in the minority with other cities, I'm just very uncomfortable with this. I like the full record. And the fact that if a member of the public needs to access something, there should be something written for them, not just an action item, something written that they can look at. It's great to say you're giving them a digital version that they can hear or read, or look at on a screen, or YouTube, or something of that sort. But quite often, I'm somebody who prefers to read minutes and read documents, rather than have them read to me. So, I would err on the side of caution. I just prefer summary minutes. Thank you. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
To address some of those comments, do we know if there's a program we might use that can do an automatic transcription of a video?
Well, I think that one of the important components of the agenda report is that there's a difficulty in as it relates to the transcriber's interpretation of what someone is saying at a meeting. They don't capture the inflection of what a person is saying. They interpret and paraphrase what a person is saying, and their interpretation may be incorrect. Computer softwares that do this sort of transcribing are notorious for even doing worse jobs as it relates to taking a discussion and then trying to convert that into a usable media format, either in a shortened version of the discussion in a verbal format, or reducing it to a Word document. So, it wouldn't be our recommendation to use a computer-related software. I'm sure you're familiar with Dragon. A lot of people use those to do dictation, and the results are oftentimes not exactly what you want them to be. So, that wouldn't be our recommendation. Again, I do want to emphasize, though, that the bigger concern here is that while the detailed summary does provide background, it doesn't necessarily accurately interpret what the members involved in discussion are saying. As you know, is very common. Part of the, of the board meetings, not necessarily the Mont Clarity Board meetings, but in many boards, the opening of the meetings is a very laborious process as they go through correcting the minutes because they weren't properly interpreted by the transcriber. And most legal advisors opine that you want to avoid that, because it not only creates confusion amongst the board members, but it could potentially establish a liability for the organization when someone says a member of the board said this, when they didn't say that, and the record is hard to then define as to what exactly was said. Of course, you can then rely on the transcripts, verbatim transcript, or the audio of the meeting. But even there, the interpretation can get bogged down as to what the transcript for the detailed summary says, because there could be an argument that a member of the board tried to influence what the transcript said. So, we advocate that it is in the better interest of the city council that you consider the abbreviated action minutes, simply because from that liability perspective, it protects the organization as well as members of the board. We certainly also understand that it has been the history of the city to produce these detailed summaries. But as the agenda report has spoken of, we have attempted to migrate away from that process. In fact, in 2011, the council did agree to transition to the action minutes. It was just a matter of the deputy city clerk at that time not making that transition for a variety of reasons on that particular individual's part. So we allowed it to continue, and as we've continued to evaluate this particular issue, reviewing what other cities have been done and what their justifications and reasons are for making the transition, we feel it's probably opportune for the city council to consider it at this time.
Anything else? Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, about 100 years ago, in the beginning of my career, when I used to be a secretary, I used to have to take very detailed medical minutes, minutes of medical meetings. And I was so green behind the ears, oftentimes they'd sprout out these medical terms. I didn't even know what they were talking about. But the thing that saved me was my little tape recorder that I would take to the meeting with me and set it on the desk, and then I could just kind of go back and go back until I could get it. And usually, you know, without that, without the recorded minutes, I could never accurately document what the physicians and other medical providers had said. So having said that, while I do agree with some of my colleagues that summary minutes do tell us a fuller story of what happened, not just who voted for what, but why did they vote that way? But, but my question for Mrs. Myrick or Mr. Starr is, how long do we, are those recordings held? So if something was, if we move to action minutes, but we want to know something from November 35th, how far back can we go to get copies of those recordings?
Under the city's current records retention policy, it's three years, but the recommendation is, in the agenda report, is that if the council approves the action minutes, then from the first meeting in which that transition occurs, the records, the digital records will be retained permanently.
And in order for any person, a councilperson, a staff, or a public person to get access to that, how easy is that? 2.5 seconds or 2.5 hours? What is that?
Well, it depends. Obviously, if you want to research it through the agendas on the city's website, you may have to find the particular meeting and then pull up the audio file. So it's just as a matter of finding that particular date for the meeting that you're wanting to recover the audio file for. Obviously, YouTube retains video files for extended periods of time, depending on a number of factors unique to YouTube. But a digital file will always be available, and just by making a request to the city clerk, the city clerk can pull up the video file and forward it to a member of the city council through a link in the, in an email.
Yes, and I would just like to add to that within the 10-day response period for a Public Records Act request, that any recording of a council meeting could easily be provided in that time. We can, you know, put things on our FTP server and provide a link to it. So just depending on how easily accessible that file is to whoever is providing it, then it should be pretty quickly provided.
Thank you. And Andrea, one thing, I'll look at the action minutes here. You were comparing that to the August 15 meeting with the actual summary minutes. And one thing I'd like to see in the action minutes, if indeed it's adopted to this evening, is for example, if I can find the action minutes now, excuse me, I try to find them. This is action attachment two. So here we are, page 42. So if I go to like page 40, what was the item here? Public hearing, so page 42, we had a public hearing. And then, I like to see, I know there were some council comments. It would be nice to just have a little small summary of what the councilors said or what questions they said. Don't have to be detailed like in the summary minutes, but a little more beef in there, just what, you know, Councilmember Ru said that he doesn't like blue, and Councilmember Johnson said she likes red, for example, and, and... Do you understand what I'm saying? You guys had this look on the face.
Well, is the paragraph that's just above the action on that item, is that not, that's not adequate for what you're thinking?
What does it say?
It says, "Discussion focused on concerns related to traffic impacts, pedestrian safety, parking, maintenance of the historic integrity of the area, modifications to Huntington Drive, and the potential future conversion of Huntington Drive into a thorough street."
I think it would be a little better if it, just kind of concern came, if this councilor said this, just, is there a concern? I think that that would be good information to have, as opposed to just...
Okay, so to attribute, attribute the concerns to which councilmember had the concerns?
Yeah, I think that would be good. We do it that way. At least, at least we know what councilors are stating.
Okay.
So that'd be good. And then, of course, if a councilor believe they want, you know, they want, they want verbiage in the minutes, then obviously we'll recognize that. And the other thing I will remind my councilmembers is that we do have to approve the minutes. So if the minutes come to us and we think there's something missing, importance in there, maybe we should be added, there's that opportunity to, to, to correct the minutes at the following meeting. So, okay, Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah. My colleague, Ms. Johnson, got me thinking. And I appreciate the city manager's answers with respect to the permanent retention of digital recordings and records of council meetings. But I have a couple of questions to the city clerk. In addition to YouTube, do we not have our council meetings on the website as well?
Yes, they're, they're posted on our website, but it's kind of like, it's through YouTube. It's like they're, yeah, there's a video hosted within our website that comes from YouTube.
So YouTube right now is, for all intents and purposes, is serving, serving as the server, the stream engine, if you will, for our meetings?
Yes.
Okay.
And we do have separate copies on our own server, though.
Now, I like what the mayor just asked with respect to some of the, notating some of the positions expressed by council members on a particular item, and I would ask that that also be included. But the sample action minutes that you prepared, would you use that as the template going forward?
Well, I was kind of playing with some different things and looking at what other cities do. And a lot of them, I think it's just easier to read when you have a box that has the action in it. It's easier to find the action quickly. So that was kind of the format that I thought would be the easiest to digest for someone who just wanted to get some quick information from looking at the minutes. But I can always, you know, change how it's done.
I do like the box. That's an added addition that I actually do like. It does make it easier to find out the, the item itself and then the actual vote that was recorded. Let me, let me ask this question, because based on the staff report, it gives the impression that those in your office helping prepare agendas and minutes, that it's becoming laborious and time-consuming. Is that a fair statement?
I mean, I would say it's always been that way. It hasn't necessarily gotten more, except for the meetings where more people come to talk.
Because I just, I just think it's the nature of the office. For any city clerk in any city in the state, that is just something that comes with the territory of the job. And I do understand that some meetings that go on longer are granted. I'm sure you might cringe at the thought of having to transcribe or prepare minutes for that particular meeting. And for those minutes that I've contributed to the long discussion, my apologies for doing so and contributing to your workload. I just, right now, one, council's not asking for this change, at least not since I've been on council. So we're not the ones bringing this forward. But right now, we have not had any problems with minutes. And I know the city manager alluded to other cities and agencies where they spend hours, or not hours, but significant amount of time amending minutes, correcting them, wanting this or that. But we don't have that problem right now. And I think what the mayor just described is if we went to in a more abbreviated format of minutes, we might actually come to a point where many of us at the dais, or a few of us, may start wanting things added in, and we may have some votes over the minutes. I can see that happening. And that, and that is where my hesitation comes, because I think the current system right now works for us. I know it is a task for the city clerk's office to prepare, but I'm very grateful that the city clerk's office does do that. But I, I actually concur a little bit of both with what Ms. Johnson said and my colleague, Mr. Ru, said. I just, until I had some assurances that these minutes aren't going to be a Cliff Note version of the meeting, I just, I'm still uneasy about it.
Okay, thank you. We're going to do a round, second round robin. The sound, Councilmember Mayor Proten Ru.
Yes. I tend to concur with what's been said by Councilmember Johnson and Lopez as far as the minutes. When we look at minutes taken by a legislative body, such as the California State Assembly and Senate, it's not just an action item, it's a summary of what was said, who said it, and what, and, you know, in some cases, they'll say, "This is why I've said this." It gives a full accounting of what happened. And my concern is, a council member may make a comment at that moment. They may not think it's important, so it's not included. But two weeks later, they say, "Oh gee, I should have said I needed to include that." I think it's better just for the, for history, and so that the public understands what has gone on to do summary minutes. A question I have is, if a member of the public, whether they're summary minutes or action minutes, calls and wants to know where the minutes are, do we send them a link to that meeting, or do we tell them to go to the website?
Well, if they're willing to be led to where it is on the website, if it's on the telephone, I might ask for their email address and send them a link. It's just, sometimes they don't have emails, so I'll just kind of try to direct them on the phone. But I do try to help them navigate to where they are on our website if they ask.
If they have an email, I would hope we just send them the link.
Yes, I...
I'm a member of the public, and I have to deal with many, many different cities in my professional life. And I'm fortunate enough that if I need something, I call them, "Oh, here's the link." I don't have to go hunt it down on a website, which can be very, very confusing.
Yes, but oftentimes, when I get phone calls asking for minutes, they usually just need my help on the website, so, and they don't have an email address, or they're not sure.
Right. If they don't have an email, that may be something different. But a way we can send them the link and assist them, because increasingly, I see government is making more and more, the public needs to do something. Whereas I look at this way, we serve the public, we should be the one doing everything for them.
Yeah, and we're also working on a way to make our older minutes more accessible on the website.
Because it can be very confusing. I have to do a lot on, with technology, I'm not the most technologically adept person. And I'm sure I'm not the only one out there who's that way. And I didn't grow up, like many people, around technology. I'm still very old-fashioned. I like things on paper. In fact, I find in my office, I can pull out a file faster than they can pull it up on the computer. But I just hope that we're, no matter what system we adopt, we're going to be there for the public and not just send them to a website, "Oh, it's on our website, go look it up." But rather, "Oh, yes, it's on the website, here's the link to," if they have an email or a way to communicate. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One last thing. I wonder if, rather than making this decision tonight, if we can look at this meeting as an action when we have our next meeting? The minutes for this meeting will be the action, and then we can kind of have a good comparison. You've done a good job here already. Some of the things I see is the consent calendar, okay, that's, that's easy to just put in the box. This is what they approved on consent, that's good. But I really would kind of like to see, like, really what it looks like. Most of the time, on a personal level, it doesn't matter if my comments are in the minutes, but sometimes it does matter. And so I'd kind of like to see what a hybrid would look like, which is not so big as the summary minutes that we have now, but not so small as the action minutes that are being proposed. Can we look at that in a couple of weeks and see if we can do a hybrid?
You want to see, you want Andrea put together both summary and a hybrid action, see what it looks like?
Not, not, no, not two sets of minutes, because that's, it would be just too much. One set of minutes that's a hybrid of summary and action.
Well, here's my concern. Right now, we're under the summary format. So if we, if she uses tonight's transcription as the basis, she will have to produce a summary, and then a, what your request is, which I'm totally in favor of doing and postponing this to the next meeting. But I think we're still going to have to get a summary minutes of tonight's meeting.
Let's do this. We've spent a lot of time on this. This is, you know, up and down. This is, you know, up and down vote, you want to get it over with. So let's do this. We will continue this to the next meeting, and we'll have our summary minutes as we normally do, and then this staff report will be on the agenda again. And then Andrea, if you're okay, you'll come up with this hybrid, and we can compare at the next meeting. Does that sound good? Everybody's good with that?
I'm fine with that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I'm going to move this to the next city council meeting.
I second.
Second? Okay, I'm not going to, we all agree?
Yes.
All right, 5-0, let's move on. Okay, we have directions there. So now, we're on our communications, and I'm going to give it to Marcia.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. City council members, I just wanted to announce that our youth basketball still have a few openings in our Division A, which is seventh to eighth graders, and our Division C, which are third to fourth graders. The registration's $65, first come, first served, and we will be taking the registrations in our recreation center. Many of you know, our Candidates Forum was held last week, and it's available for viewing on the City of Montclair's YouTube and Facebook pages. Tomorrow, and again on November 1st, San Bernardino County will be providing the free flu vaccines and COVID-19 vaccines and boosters in our Montclair Community Center from 9:00 until 1:30, I'm sorry, 9:30 to 1:30. No insurance is required, appointments are encouraged, walk-ins will be accepted. You can pre-register if you'd like to at myturn.ca.gov. And this Thursday, mark your calendars, I think I mentioned this at our last meeting, the Montclair After School Program MAP will be hosting their annual Lights On After School event. That'll be this Thursday, October 20th, from 6:30 to 8:30. The event will feature visual arts, dance, drama, and music created and performed by students from all of our 10 MAP sites, and it'll be in our community center.
All right, thank you.
I just have a couple more items I just want to mention. If anybody is interested in assistance with food and toy baskets, the deadline to schedule your appointment is this Friday, October 21st. You can contact our recreation center, and they can help you with that. And finally, our Halloween Spooktacular will be on Saturday, October 29th, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. It'll be at Montclair Place. There'll be costume contests, games, DJ, other, a lot of other activities. It'll be located next to the pumpkin patch outside. Event sponsored by the city, of course, Montclair Place, Burt Tech Waste, West Coast Arbors, and our Women's Club of Montclair. We hope to see you there.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have the one item as indicated in the agenda, and that's for the city council to meet in closed session on the two pending litigation matters, Garcia versus Lopez in Montclair, and Fuentes versus Lopez in Montclair. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, city manager.
No items.
Couple of items. First of all, I want to give you an update on the ITM on a Vista, ITM on a Vista Central Avenue crossings. So I appreciate staff coming up with some recommendations to help ease the traffic congestion as folks are going north-south. And many of the recommendations, SPCA either has enacted or will be enacting that, doesn't mean it's going to solve the problem completely, but it does help a little bit. Seems like traffic has eased up a little bit, especially in non-peak hours. A non-peak hour doesn't seem, less of an issue. The Monta Vista, the Monta Vista, the 55-hour closure on the westbound, starting from Monta Vista on the 10 freeway, originally was about two weeks ago, that now has been moved to Friday, November 4th, that 55 hours, and obviously will impact Monta Vista itself in terms of, of turn lanes being closed. And I know I saw a Facebook post today regarding it to the public, and Ed, can we get some reader signs out there, let people know that it's coming, and kind of avoid the area, because I'm not going there for that weekend, I'm going to avoid it as much as I can. But, but, so there's that. And then, Ed, I know that you told me that the grant for the fire engine was not accepted, so staff will be coming back, I believe at the next meeting, for a purchase order to purchase a new fire engine.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, great. So I have, thank you. Let's start with Mayor Protem Rue.
I will keep it short, number one. I did attend the Gold Line JPA meeting, which was held. And again, Montclair is still in the running. Our friends in Claremont are also still in the running. We do need to make sure we have the funding from Pomona to Claremont and Claremont to Montclair. It sometimes seems like a big leap, but we're going to do it. It is important, not just to Montclair, it's important to the region and important to anybody who travels these already congested freeways, which won't be made any easier when you have to start paying a toll. Because what happens is the toll lanes run pretty free, and the other lanes are more congested, because there are those of us who don't have the money to pay for a toll lane. We just don't. So they will run, so there'll be much more of a need for mass transit. As far as Central and Monta Vista, I appreciate the efforts that are being made, but it still is an ordinate bit of backup going north or south on both streets. It's not just Central, it's not just Monta Vista. It impacts Mountain, which is in Ontario and Upland, but still, it affects them. We need to move people through this area, businesses depend on it. And I certainly see that on the west side of LA, they're very prompt and quick to make sure that these things are done as fast as they can. And out here, they don't care. I listened to people who during COVID were wringing their hands about the business community and loss of revenue, and I don't see those same individuals wringing their hands now over the loss of revenue with many, many businesses on Central, Monta Vista, Benson, and Mountain, and many other streets. So I, I just hope that those who are dealing with this freeway on a professional level will understand, those of us who, at the working man's level, have to take these roads, have to drive them, and have to figure out how we add extra minutes to our day so that we can get around them. And sometimes it's not an extra minute. It took me almost an hour one day last week to go from Glendora to Montclair. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. October 8th, last Saturday, I had the pleasure of attending the Seraptus International Casino Night. I believe there was, what, 400? Maybe, maybe, just, well, thereabouts, yeah, a lot, a very packed Montclair Senior Center, where they raise funds to provide scholarships to young women in need. And our emcee for the evening was none other than our colleague, Mayor Protem Bill Rue, dressed in his snazzy attire as Las Vegas James Bond. Am I correct? Okay. I also attended the Montclair Chamber of Commerce breakfast this last Thursday, the 13th, and a very enthusiastic, go-getting, dynamic, not let anything get him down, doesn't let any wall deter him, a gentleman by the name of Christian, presented, representing the workforce innovation, well, I'm sorry, representing Hawkeye, who was part of the Workforce Innovation Opportunity Act. And they provide 120 hours of paid staffing to any business for youth ages eight, ages 16 to 24, that have some developmentally challenges. If any business in the city needs staff and wants to give an individual a chance, by all means, call Hawkeye, call Christian, you can reach him, he's the Career Pathways Coordinator at area code 626-720-2487. And I would highly recommend that you take advantage of that for those business members in the community. I'm sure my colleague Ms. Johnson might touch on these real quickly, but we got, I know that the owners of I-10 Towing approached us and presented, introduced themselves to us about four to six months ago. Josette is the owner. Josette actually took over the business from a longtime friend of ours, Ray Reyes, who is from Chino, who recently passed. But Josette is picking up the mantle and carrying on the business very well. Her ribbon cutting is this Thursday, October 20th, from 12:00 to 1:00 p.m. And I hear they're having a good spread. I'll let Ms. Johnson announce what the food's going to be. And then I did promise that I would do my part. If there's anybody that owns a vintage car and is part of a car club, and I'm talking to anyone in the Ontario Car Club or the Chino Car Club. Those of you in Ontario, I know you put on a good show along Euclid Avenue. And those of you in Chino, I know you put on a good show at the Chino Corn Feed Event with combined thousands of cars between the two cities. We are having a First Annual Family Fall Festival with a Classic Car Show here in Montclair, Saturday, November 5th, 10 to 2. $30 is your entrance fee to enter your car into the contest and have it display, displayed. That is a very reasonable fee. And for those that want to simply pop up a tent and hold a booth, that's $50. I encourage you to please reach out to the Chamber of Commerce, this Friday is the deadline. Register, show your car, we'd love to have a good turnout for our first shindig in the city. Just a couple of things. Earlier today, I was hoping the resident that brought up the issue of the homeless regarding Ramona and Palo Verde, but Palo Verde along the 10, I witnessed unfortunately a couple homeless individuals today while I passed through. It looks, it looks like they were tidying up their place underneath the freeway, using the underpass as their home. I, if you could please, Mr. City Manager or staff, or if Gabe's watching, please look out for that area, see if those individuals can be approached about potential housing or address that area, it'd be appreciated. And then, I have an odd inquiry. What is our policy regarding livestock or excessive animals on property in residential
Livestock are prohibited under city code.
That's, that's what I thought. I will give staff the address of, of a location. And then, I know that we approved, council approved the alley constructions of seven different locations in the city. Was wanting to know if there was any further discussion as to when those would set to begin, and which areas would be slated to do, to be started first?
I believe it's still out to bid. We have, have we received the bid proposals yet? We have? Do you want to respond?
Yes, Councilman Lopez, city manager, and members of, can you hear me? I don't know. Oh, I have to talk louder, I'm sorry. There was a bid opening last Thursday. Staff is in the process of evaluating those bids to bring those forward to the city count, the city manager for his signature.
Okay.
And I anticipate maybe three weeks, three to four weeks before that would, would start.
Any determination as to, of the seven, which would be going first?
My, in talking with Steve Stanton, who's the project manager, he indicated probably the north and south alleys would be constructed first. East-west would be on the latter part.
And then, once council approves or the city manager makes recommendation to us as a body, you said about three weeks construction might begin? My next question with respect to that timeframe is, how soon would residents impacted be notified?
They'll be notified prior to construction. I can't give you a date on that.
Okay.
But I believe that when you, my understanding is, when you approved advertising it, you gave the city manager authority to execute the contract and move forward, because there's CDBG funding and a tight timeline associated with that work.
February. I was just concerned about the notification to residents, that's why I'm asking.
Typically, it's a week advance.
Okay, thank you, thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a few quick items. One, I believe that we have all received our mail-in ballots. So if you are not planning to go into the polls, please fill out your mail-in ballot and get it sent off. There is a box here at City Hall, right here in our parking lot, where you can put your ballot. I believe there's one at the police department as well, where you can put your ballot in there, and then you can track it through the register of voters. So please make sure that you have your voice heard. I'm not going to tell you how to vote, well, I kind of want to, but, but please, 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 please. No matter how you choose to vote, please vote. So that's one thing. The other thing is, the Montclair Chamber of Commerce is hiring. We are looking for an event coordinator. We have, we registered with Hawkeye this morning, because it's a great opportunity to mentor young people into a new career. So we, we're working on that. But if you know anybody who is an event coordinator who's looking for employment, please have them send their resume to us at the Montclair Chamber of Commerce. That email address is exec@montclerchamber.com. That's E-X-E-C at montclerchamber.com. And then lastly, you heard already from Councilmember Lopez about the I-10 Grant Opening that's happening this Thursday, the 20th. But you know, what's interesting to me is when we look at people in a certain job class, we think they're only that job class. But one of the gentlemen who is the driver for I-10 Towing, he looks like, you know, he's a, he's got the vest and everything, he looks like that's his only thing, but he's actually a caterer, which is what his love is. And so, and he's showcasing his catering at this event on Thursday. I don't know the whole menu, but I know that there's barbecue ribs, barbecue chicken, shrimp mac and cheese, and a whole bunch of other stuff that they rattled off that I can't remember. So I would strongly invite all of you to stop by and have lunch, and you may decide at some point in the future you want to use them as a caterer. But the more important thing is that I-10 Towing is connected with AAA. So I don't know how many of you have used AAA recently, but one day, a few months ago, when we had triple-digit heat, I was stranded at the gas station on Central Avenue and could not get out of there. And the wait for AAA was about three and a half hours. But if you have a contact with I-10 Towing, you can just call them directly, and they will use your AAA benefits. So that you don't have to sit in that long queue from God knows how long before you have to, before you can get assistance. And I can tell you, it was quite unpleasant, sitting there in a car with no air conditioning, and getting the glares from people, because I wouldn't get out of their way, and a couple people got out of their cars and said, can you move? Okay, well, if I had had the number for I-10 Towing at that time, I would have been able to move quickly. So please join us, Thursday, October 20th. The address is 5391 Brook Street in Montclair. Again, 5391 Brook Street, here in Montclair. The event starts at noon, and I think shortly after the ribbon cutting, the lunch, because we're really all going for the lunch. Shortly after the ribbon cutting, the lunch will be served, so please join us for that. And I think that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes, thank you. We had a special request from one of our residents to support her younger brother's water polo game tomorrow at Montclair High School at 3:30 p.m. It'll be held, obviously, at the pool. And also importantly, tomorrow is Marcia Richter's birthday. This is a message from Assemblymember Freddie Rodriguez's office. Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Assemblymember Rodriguez will be having a women's health fair at the Ralph Welch Park at 980 Buena Vista Avenue in Pomona. That is all. Thank you, Mary DeTray.
Well, thank you, and I just want to say, Juliette, you're here. I'm not sure where the other two candidates are, because we do exist, we have in-person meetings, but Juliette is here, so, obviously, she's running for city council in Montclair. So with that, we're going to go to closed session.